Would you lead us in our pledge, our prayer and prayers?
Heavenly Father, it is with great humility that we come into your presence, Lord. We seek your blessing and guidance as we endeavor to conduct the business of the Wayne County School System. We ask for clarity, cooperation, and vision in the decisions that we make tonight. And Heavenly Father, help us to be ever mindful of the central figure in all that we do is the education of our students and to prepare them for life, whether they go to college or whether they go into the workforce. We ask your blessings again on this meeting. In Jesus' name we humbly pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in heaven, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Roy, would you lead us in our mission statement?
Our mission is to empower all students to reach their highest levels of achievement. Our vision is that the Wayne County School System will be a progressive system in partnership with the community where all students acquire the knowledge and skills to be productive, responsible, and successful citizens in a rapidly changing world. And our featured belief is literacy is the foundation of education.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as is tonight.
A second.
Moved in second, did he?
Dr. Wood.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ed.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Williams.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Set.
Yes, ma'am. And now we was off to you.
I think we adopt the agenda as presented by the superintendent.
And our second. Moved in second, did he?
Dr. Wood.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ed.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Williams.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Set.
Yes, ma'am.
Any public participation?
Thank you. I'll go to items of business, Superintendent.
Yes, sir. Dr. Wood, we have a student from Martha Puckett Middle School that I want to recognize. If I can get Ms. Harper, Dr. Schu, who's going to recognize this young man. I'm not going to steal thunder. I want the principal and Ms. Harper, I think, assisted with this. I know she teaches Kai. You know, this is a real great honor for a young man to be chosen to serve and represent us in this role. But Dr. Schu, if you'll tell us a little bit more.
Good afternoon, everyone. All Georgia public schools were presented with a challenge. The challenge was to assist the state school superintendent. Mr. Richard Woods was selecting members of his 2015 Student Advisory Council. Throughout the school year, these middle and high school students will travel to Atlanta to meet with Superintendent Woods to discuss the impact of state policies in the classroom and will serve as the superintendent's ambassadors to their respective schools. More than 1,000 students in the state of Georgia applied to serve on this council. However, only 64 members were selected. Students were selected based on the strength of their essay, which focused on their ideas and public education and ways their own educational experience could be improved. I would like to introduce to you the teacher who accepted the superintendent's challenge and presented the Martha Puckett Middle School students with this information, and that is our teacher of our gifted students, Ms. Tammy Harper. We also had a seventh grade student from Martha Puckett selected one out of one of the 64 students to serve on the 2015 Student Advisory Council, and that is Mr. Kai Riddle was selected. Congratulations, Mr. Kai Riddle. He is one of 64 to take ideas from Wayne County all the way to the State Department to make everything better for our students here. Again, congratulations, and this is the surprise.
Kai, do you want to say anything?
No.
Sure.
Thank you for letting me come here and be represented and represent Wayne County.
Appreciate you being able to.
Short, sweet politician.
Something to that. All right, the next recognition we have, I don't know if Coach Grooms didn't make it, so Mr. Adams gets the pinch hit, but our maintenance department does a tremendous job, and they certainly don't get the recognition that they deserve. I did want to at least get them up here tonight, and I think Ray had to threaten them to get them here because they certainly stayed in the shadows. But Mr. Thornton, if you'll come up with you and your crew, I'm going to let Mr. Adams discuss and describe the award that they achieved through the hard work. There's a lot of hard work goes into it. As an ex-coach myself, I spend a lot of time on those fields, and so when I see our guys working as hard as they do to make things look as great as they do, you know, I'm sure they appreciate it. Ms. Adams, tell us a little bit about the award.
In 1998, Pioneer C Company decided to go around, start looking at different schools that purchased their products across the country and look at how their products are being used in schools and on the fields. In doing so, they decided to create a reward, an award program for school systems to apply for if they have outstanding fields and outstanding facilities in which their sports programs participate on. And Wayne County High School, Wayne County School System actually applied for this application and applied for this award and was selected. We had to send in numerous pictures. You see the picture behind you on the screens of what our fields look like. All the hard work that you see in that feature you see on Friday nights or at baseball games comes from our maintenance department. When they saw our application, we were selected as one of the winners from across the United States based on the hard work. So our maintenance facility, Wayne County School System, has won the 2014-15 Fields of Excellence Award for the hard work that our maintenance department has done preparing our fields for all the games and activities that we have throughout middle school and high school.
And with us tonight, we have George Moody and Mr. Gale Bell. Certainly to speak, I'm going to let Kai show you. I think you want to say?
I just want to say it's a team effort. It's like a ball team. There's like eight other guys, nine other guys work with us, and we go out there, each guy moves his job, and we just get a field on Friday mornings or Thursday, sometime on Thursday, that start. And, you know, and them other guys, you know, them out here, but I like to include them because they're just as much part of it as we are. And also, there'd be a calendar coming out in October. I talked to my seller yesterday, and they picked, there's 12 schools get picked on this calendar, and we're one of them. She didn't know what month we'd be, and she said she'd send us like 25, 30 copies, so I get one this summer.
Great, great. And this award specifically tied to Don't Smash Your Field or was it all athletic fields? So it's all athletic fields or nothing?
Yeah.
Great, great job. We appreciate what you did.
Just so you kind of understand what they do, because of rainouts, between now and Saturday, I believe we have over 20 athletic events that are going to go on here on our fields, between soccer, baseball, and that sort of thing. So these guys are all the ones to get the fields ready. Most of the time, there's anywhere from three to five things going on at one time. So it's this hard work from this crew. I just want to say, yeah, thank you for all y'all doing.
And the last recognition of the night, if I can get all of the members of our GLISI cohort and Dr. Edenfield, I've asked her to kind of help me. Dr. Edenfield led this group that, you know, we had a representation of, I think we had 16, 17?
Fourteen.
14 individuals. A good slice of our system go to, went through GLISI, which is Georgia Leadership Institute for School Improvement. You know, this group is kind of the first group that went back. We went to GLISI for a while, and we wondered what it is, what do you do, but it's all about school improvement. And these individuals took, you know, their perspective of our school system as well as their specific schools or their specific roles up to Atlanta. We spent a lot of time, you know, had a little fun on the way, but they put in a lot of hard work, started a lot of work that we're going to have to continue, you know, in weeks and really years to come. But this is something we want to pick back up and continue to do. But again, I'll start left to right. That's, you know, of course, Dr. Helen Schuman, Ms. Amy Denny, Ms. Mary Wiles, Ms. Tina Mosley, Dr. Renee Robinson, Dr. Princess Dow, Ms. Cheryl Brinkley, Ms. Suzette Williamson, Dr. Mark Priester, Ms. Sean Yeomans, Ms. Leslie Johnson, and Dr. Reggie Burgess. Everybody, they all went, and again, they put in a lot of hard work, and Dr. Edenfield's given them a certificate and a pen. This is something, again, to also help build our leadership capacity within our system, which I think is very important. One of the initiatives that I'm certainly trying to work on as superintendent, but I just wanted to recognize these folks and thank them for the hard work that they've begun for our system.
Dr. Branson? Yes, sir. You can get him to scratch up a little bit.
Can you come up front, folks, and scratch up for a good picture? Do a good job of scratching.
Dr. Branson, are you going to join us if you were part of this?
I certainly will.
Why don't you come up and crunch?
All right, I think Ms. Williams, at this time, is going to come forth and go over the February financial report with us.
Page one, I'm going to start with page one, the system financial report for February. The top of page one shows our cash balances.
You need the microphone. There you go.
Sorry. The total operating cash as of February 28th was 11.6 million. As you see, we have a $6 million CD. And the bottom of that page shows that we've collected 11.3 million in annual taxes for this year. Martha, if you'll move on to page three, please. Total general fund revenue for the month, we were 3.2 million, 27 million year-to-date. And Martha, if you'll scroll on down to the end of our general fund page 11. Year-to-date expenses are 22.7 million. And then the next section, Martha, sorry, is our capital projects. That top line you see there is our sales tax for the month, 300,000. We did have a small expenditure for the ODOM. That was some testing, I believe, or some surveys for the side. Next page is net purchase and pre-K. Again, I'll remind you that this is on a reimbursable basis. We skim money and then we reimburse it. The following page, you see some federal and pre-K there. Then Martha, the next page is school food service. Their expenditures do exceed their revenues year-to-date a little over $38,000. And the final page is our one budget amendment we received carryover for total. Any questions?
Okay, I'll say it. Moved in second, did he? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ed.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Williams.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Set.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Ms. Sarah Edison. She's going to go over our E-Rate program. And our application to this point.
For the new people to the board, each year I come before the board to go over the contracts that we have made for which we get what's called an E-Rate discount. Just very briefly, this is a program that was started about 19 years ago. This will be the 18th year that we've applied for it. And it is a program to help schools and libraries throughout the United States to pay for their And the way it is financed is through your, everybody's telephone bill. If you check your telephone bill, you know, you have all these strange charges. But the charge that says universal service charge, that's the E-Rate program. And so all of that money is pooled together through this program that we participate in that we call E-Rate. And what you have to do is you take bids or quotes or you get prices from various vendors for the telecommunications services that you have, and you pick the, you're supposed to pick the lowest bid unless you have good reasons not to. And then you have to apply, this is the time of the year that we apply, and sometime about July, unless it's something special, we get our approval or disapproval. If we've done the application correctly, we will get approved. And then from that point, for our bills for those services, the universal service charge reimburses us a certain percent. Right now, we're at 82%. So this is based on the fact that we are considered a rural school system, and it also is based on our free and reduced lunch count. So they have a little formula that they, according to the number of students that we have at school each year that get free and reduced lunch, then the percentage is calculated for us. And so for our district, our percentage is 82%. So that means for all of these different bills, the school system only has to pay 18% of what we are charged. So the ones, they're divided this year into two groups because they're doing some different things this year, but the handout you have about the telecommunications charges, the company, the first one is for our internet access, and this is for, the state provides our main internet line coming in to the board that we can distribute to all the schools. But this is for a backup internet line. In case ours goes down, the other one goes down, we can transfer all the traffic over to this other one, and also it boosts our bandwidth also. So the company that got the bid for that one was AT&amp;T, and so just to show you, I won't go over all these figures, but for example, the cost to us for this line is $16,263, but we only have to pay $2,927 a year for that line. So this is how the program works. They just bill us for that amount, the smaller amount. And then the second thing that we have is our leased fiber. And that is a fiber line that goes from the Board of Education to each one of our schools that we lease from a different company. And so for the, ever since we've done this, we leased it through Almatelphong, and Almatelphong was the low bid this year also. What they have increased our bandwidth between the schools for this coming school year 10 times. So that is to keep up with the increase that the state is doing for our bandwidth coming into the system. So we've got to deliver it to all the schools. So therefore, we had to increase our bandwidth between all of the, among all the schools. So that was the company that got that bid. It's slightly higher because, but just a very fraction higher, but we are getting 10 times the amount that we got in previous years. The next item is our regular telephone service, which E-Rate calls POTS. Anyway, the phone service, the rest of these items, they changed the ruling this year, and they're trying to phase out reimbursing us for just telephone services. So starting this year, instead of getting the 82% discount, the discount will be decreased 20% each year until it gets to zero, and then at that point, they won't reimburse us for our telephone charges anymore. So this year, instead of getting an 82% discount, we're getting a 62% discount, which made, that's going to make our cost more for these services. But for our telephone service, Almatelphong Company was the low bid for our telephone service, and for our two, for Odom and Scriven, their carrier is Windstream. So we don't really get, they don't give us bids. We just do the month-to-month charges for Windstream.
Ms. Edson, real quick, when did we find out about that change? Do you recall?
This fall.
This fall?
Mm-hmm.
Way after our budget is set, miller just said.
Yes.
But that's one of those. That's one of those.
The E-Rate year doesn't necessarily go along with anything else. That's why, I'll get to it in a minute, you know, we have to approve these contracts before you set the budget. So the way we get, solve this problem, because the E-Rate applications have to be filed, the deadline this year is in April, but normally it's the end of March. But on all the contracts that we make with these companies, they have to have two caveats. Number one, the contract has to say that it is subject to inclusion in the budget. It's one. And then if it's a multi-year contract, the contract has to say that it's subject to approval by the renewal by the board, because of course you can't encumber yourself with something on a year to come before you've done a budget for it. So all these contracts have to have those two caveats in them.
Ms. Edson, that decline you're talking about, that's where we're going to end up paying 100%, do you know what year?
It'll be 62% this coming year, then 42, then it's four years, the fourth year.
The fourth year.
We'll be gone. And what they're trying to do there is they're trying to push everybody to change into voice over IP, but we haven't done that yet because there's a lot of cost involved. We got a bid for that this year, but it's a really big cost in not doing that upfront. And then the next one is long-distance charges. We spend very little for long distance, but the low bid was Almatelphong Company again. And then our cell phones, we have, we use Verizon as the carrier. That was the, we only had one system to bid for our cell phones. And another change, let's see, the cell phones, yeah, that was it. The, in the past, but one thing that is going to help us a little bit is in the past, we could only pay, the E-Rate would only reimburse us for certain roles in the school system. For example, if the superintendent had a cell phone and a teacher had a cell phone that the system paid for, and we only have one teacher like that, the, you have to have an instructional role in some way. So we couldn't pay for, let's say, the Ray Thornton's phone, we couldn't pay for David Simmons' phone. But now, this coming year, they're changing the rules, and they say that they will reimburse for any phone that's used in the school system that's paid for by the school system for any school system purpose. So that's going to help us out a lot. For example, it wouldn't reimburse us for the lunchroom phone if it had a separate line, but now this year it will. So those are the, we have one more for our radios, but that, we only had one company that gave us a quote for that, and he had to revise his quote for several things. So we'll do that in another meeting. But these are the quotes for all these telecommunications calls. Because of these changes, there is a slight increase of what we have to pay for this coming year. So do you have any questions about the telecommunications? Okay, the next part of this is something else new that they're doing with E-Rate. This year, they, they've started a program, it's going to be a five-year program, that where they have, they realized the need for a lot of systems to upgrade their network in order to do the things that we're having to do in the school system. We're, now we're on the online testing, and so everything we do has to keep up with that. We have to improve our network. So the E-Rate is, the reason that they are going away from paying for the telephone services is that they're going to put the money over into network services. So this program is to pay for our network equipment or help us pay for our network equipment. And the way they have worked it out is that we are allotted $150 for every student per school. It's a school-by-school thing. $150 per student that has to be, that can be used over the next five years. You can use it all in one year if you have that much stuff, or you could spread it out over several years. And what we are trying to do is improve our network. We had outdated, and we're doing it through a several-phase project. First of all, we received a grant from the Department of Education, and ours actually came from the Governor's Office of School Improvement. But last year, we used that grant money to buy a new web filter, and so that money was spent for that and upgrading some things in the county office level. This year, the grant was used to buy a new switch for each one of our schools that will handle our increased bandwidth that we're going to have. And so then the third phase of it, which we have to come up with a way to pay for it on our own, is through E-Rate to improve all the other switches in the network, because these are all little devices that connect us all together. So we have to be able to communicate from what the state sends us in bandwidth, we have to deliver that to each one of our schools, to their head end of their network, and then we have to deliver it to that, to the subsidiary network closets down the hallways, so therefore that each individual student in their classroom can take advantage of it. So it's just a linking process to make sure everything is linked together. And then the other thing that we need to do is improve our wireless network by more wireless access points. So in order to do that, we identified several devices, particular models of switches that we needed to do this in the parks for them, and the E-Rate program promised us that they would pay for them. We can spend, if we wanted to come up with this, if we wanted to pay our 18%, we can spend $612,000 over the next five years. But that was really intended for schools that have to do everything. Believe it or not, there's still a lot of schools in the United States that just haven't upgraded their network past a T1, so they don't have fiber back lines in their schools. Anyway, so we took bids for these network components, and our low bid for most of the items was a company named MXN who sells these switches and other network items to us, and also for, the company that got the bid for the wireless access points was A3. We wanted some other components, some more switches, and what we decided to do is divide our request into two years because that, we've still got to come up with the 18%, our share of the cost. So we wanted to divide it into two separate years. So with, the upshot of this is it comes to a little over $23,000, which would be our portion to pay for these items. The total cost of the items before the discount is $132,000 below. So this is the plan for what we want to do for the network upgrades. Do you have any questions? So what I am really asking is what we need to do is to have it documented that the board approves us going ahead with applying for these, with signing these contracts. that the board approves us going ahead with applying for these, with signing these contracts and applying for this, this money. It's got, I think I left off one of the caveats. The caveats are it's subject to the inclusion in the budget for the coming year. It's subject to approval of the board. That's one of them that we're looking at tonight. And the third one is also subject to E-Rate approval. Therefore, if we don't, for some reason, don't get E-Rate approval, we don't have to spend this money. The contract that we made with this company is void. So all the contracts have that, those caveats in them.
I'll make a motion to approve the E-Rate contracts as presented.
Second? Will you be seconded?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. All right, the next item we have is, you know, we have some individuals from both, I believe, Georgia Power and Satilla, RNC. Emma, are you speak for Satilla?
I will.
Just, okay. Mr. Colley, are you ready? Did you want to?
Yeah, I'm sorry, ahead, step back.
That's all right. We've invited both providers to come and do a brief presentation and ask them to submit a proposal for you to consider. We have that. Ms. Williams, want to come forward and address the board?
In relation to the Martha Ronald Smith School, excuse me. At this time, Georgia Power's not convinced that it is competitive load. So that's why they did not submit a proposal. And that's, has to do with the Territory Act 73.